Oh, there you are. I was wondering where you had gotten off to. We we did say ten, yes? No, I was just getting a little concerned that maybe you were still asleep. But good, you are here now. You you still want to do this? No, I, of course, I do not mind. If if it will help you to get some of your studying and work done whilst being in company with me, then I I do not mind. It is not a problem for me to help out. I mean, this is work that I have to do anyway. It does not make a difference for me whether we are doing it on my own or together, like. It is not as if you are here to make a bunch of distracting noise. No, so. Though of course you are always a little bit distracting. I did not mean that to cause offence. I was trying to tease you. What I mean, Lubov, is looking like that, it is very hard to concentrate on work when you are around. I can be flirtatious, yes? Having certain anxieties about public speaking and socializing, it does not have anything to do with my ability to talk one-on-one with someone, especially when it is someone who I have grown very comfortable around. But no, we're not doing that. Come, sit. There is plenty of room on the table. I did move some things out of the way. Hopefully I made enough room. Good, then we can begin. I'm not going to be like some sort of teacher, though, you know, technically an assistant to professor. I have had to cover the odd class before, but I will not be reprimanding you if you get distracted, but I know this is work that you want to get done, so. If there is a little chit-chat that happens, I will not be completely annoyed, but I do have to get this done, and so do you. We should try and not let the entire next hour be us talking the entire time. But I'm not going to silence you like some sort of librarian. I don't want this to be something that is now anxiety-inducing for you. It's just me. I would have thought you would be used to being alone with me by now. If you are just stressed about the class work, I believe in you. You've been working so hard. As long as you do your best. I know that is a little hypocritical of a perfectionist like me to say, but well, yes, I know that I would be disappointed in myself if I did not get highest grade. And I know you probably will be disappointed in yourself if you do not get the best grade that you think you could. As long as you pass, you know, I'm not going to be disappointed in you. Therefore, even if you fail, I'm not going to be disappointed in you. But I know you will be disappointed in yourself. I know. But that is why we are doing this sort of study session. Whatever you want to call it. I figured that maybe you could feel a little more at ease when it is just me here, rather than in a hall or library surrounded by lots of other people. And it will still be a little bit like similar environment with you know, I am also writing and turning pages of my book and all of that. Could create a similar sort of feeling. I I do not know if that makes sense. Well, I suppose I am now the one who is talking too much. I'm sure you're doing great. And if you have any questions, I may not exactly be able to answer all of them, but I can give them my best shot. Of course, as I said, I don't mind. If I had needed desperately to do all of this work on my own, I wouldn't have said that this was okay. Please. I know I said I do not want distractions, but please don't worry about distracting me. Okay, just just try and focus. You've got this. I will be working on my own stuff. Well, yes, you know, I'm constantly making notes. I'm trying to figure out different ways to use Hextech, you know, the the ideas that Jace has. The ideas that we both have had so far are all very well and good and they work, you know, in allowing things to, for travel and and machinery. Though I have feeling that, well, it is not so much Jace's idea to use them perhaps for weapons. It is more the council, which I always expected from the start. I mean, if we were going to get funding from the higher-ups, Piltover, of course they were going to want to use them to make weapons. I know that they see it as self-defense, but let's face it. If a couple people come up from the Undercity with tiny little guns, or frankly, most of them only have knives, only to get blasted with some sort of Hextech weapon, doesn't really seem like a fair fight, does it? Not to mention that anyone from the Undercity coming up here normally is only coming up here to steal scraps. Not something anyone needs to die over. Sorry, not to go to a darker topic. What I meant to say was that there are still so many ways that we could use them to help people, and I know that the council does not care about helping the Undercity. If only they would understand that if the Undercity people felt equal to us, then they would not hate us. I used the word "us" to describe Piltover. I do not let me do that again. Well, I suppose I am not one of this lot. Not that the Undercity would probably claim me as one of theirs anymore either, but I know that I can do things to help. I mean, imagine if we could use Hextech to clear out pollution in 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 the waters, in the river, in the air down there. If people down there just at least had enough health and 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 money and food and water and to live comfortable lives. Piltover does not seem to understand this. I do not know that they will ever be able to. At least not the council. That the people in the Undercity would not be fighting so hard against Piltover if they just had, frankly, basic decent human rights. It's very easy to look down and call it these slums, as if they got themselves in this situation when the effect is Piltover pours its pollution down there. What chances do they have? When half of them I mean, the, sorry. How many lives are lost because it is not a safe environment to grow up in? And they send their enforcers down there to, to what? Not to stop them from fighting each other? Not to actually weed out any corruption that is happening in the Undercity? I am ranting again. I apologize, Lubov. I only actually meant to say that I have been looking into ways to try and help the Undercity more, and if I could fin- if I could convince the council, or convince Jace. I don't know. But at least if I do it under the guise of that it's also helping Piltover, that, you know, clearing pollution is a thing that all of us need. Piltover does not have a lot of pollution, but it still exists. I could I could tell them that it could become worse, and so they need Hextech. And and as for stuff that could help medically, well, that is good use for everyone, no matter where from. So I've been studying myself, I suppose. Well, I know a lot about physics and chemistry. Biology and medical science is not my strongest suit. No, I was more, well, also engineer, but I know a little enough biology to understand my own body and what helps it, but if there could be ways that would not just prolong life for a couple extra years, but prolong it until someone is of old age. Maybe a way to make better prosthetics, better medicine. I that is what I'm trying to work on. And they have rambled away the first almost fifteen minutes of your study session. I please do your best to concentrate. Do not pay any mind to anything that I have said. If I mumble under my breath too much, please just let me know. You brought water with you, yes? Good. Look, I am trying to be responsible. I have my own, so. Yes, I don't want you to catch me dehydrated again. You can be quite scary when you want to be. Right. I don't know if it wants to be bigger. Yes, I will be. Sketching as well, trying to work out designs, you know, for what the actual units could look like, for things that could house the crystals essentially in a better way. They are. When I say they are fragile things, I do not mean, you know, they are not porcelain. They will not break if you drop them on the floor, but they are, what is the word? Volatile things. They won't break if you drop them on the floor. Not as in like the way they take glass, right? But they may explode, yes. Need to work on that. How much distance needs to be? I mean, at least twenty, perhaps more. No, fuck, that isn't the right angle. Okay, better. What is it you need to do? Thank you. Shit. Try not to press that hard with the pencil, and that is exactly why that line was not where I wanted it to go. Well, yes, this is only sketch. It is not. I know something that is getting judged by anyone. As in myself. You know, I probably am my own worst critic. Do they say that we all are? I do not know that it's true for everyone. Well, for example. Sometimes I think the time in England is actually our worst critic. Oh, of course he supports us. You know, I have worked for him for a very long time. I thought perhaps someone like him could understand, you know, what it is like to be ostracized. You do not see many oddos around here, but I don't know. I know he's seen things that I probably couldn't imagine. I don't exactly know how old he is. I do not know what he remembers of the Undercity, if he knows what it was like before. I mean, obviously he was around when you know, the bridge attacks, yes? I was at school when this happened. Yes, already up here at the academy. Not the best time to be from the Undercity and be here. Not that people were ever really good about it, they weren't, but especially after that what failed the revolution happened. No one ever looked at me the same. You know, perhaps there were some people who were warming up to me, I suppose, but after that, no. No one wanted anything to do with me. Oh, I know it's not my fault. And for a long time, I blamed the people in the revolution. I blamed the people from the Undercity for tempering with my chance at maybe being accepted here, but you know, I met someone once. Hmm, sometimes I would, I suppose, get homesick, you could call it, and I would sneak down to the Undercity. No one really paid attention back then as much as you was going up or down. And I saw well, I had this sort of mental figure when I was young. I do not know if I would exactly call him a father figure. Perhaps he was one of the closest parental figures that I had. His work intrigued me and yet scared me. He was a little bit into a, what would you call it? Bioengineering. Do you know what that is? Tempering with biology to try and make species more strong. He believed perhaps that with chemicals and things, I don't know if he was thinking about breeding, but that that's how people in the Undercity could get better. That's how humanity could could survive, whereas I mean, look at me now. Am I much different? Rather than injecting people with things, I would rather try and create devices that may help them. I suppose maybe he would say we are quite similar now. But yes, so he had a friend, a friend once, or his partner or boss. I really, I do not really understand what the relation is between the two of them. No, not that kind of part. I meant like business partner. I think he funds since the research, it would make sense. This man, he has quite a, well, not a lot of money by Piltovian standards, but by Undercity standards, yes. I suppose you could call him a businessman. And he knew who I was. Of course, he he walked in on the two of us meeting and talking. He knew. Perhaps he knew. I feel like he knows who everyone is down there. I am only thinking about it because, you know, what he told me was that I was never going to be accepted up here. No matter how much I'd like to change, try to blend in with them, learn their mannerisms and and ways and even if I was smarter than all of them up here put together. Which I dare say I could be. That even then I would not ever be one of them. He was right. Yes, he was right. It was God, what maybe seven years ago now. But not much has changed. And I don't know what he's doing now, that man. But he saw straight through me. With a mind like that, I imagine he is doing quite well for himself. I haven't been back to the Undercity since. What would be the point? I am too Undercity-like for Piltover. But if I go back to the Undercity, I fear I do not blend in well there anymore. I think they'll be able to smell the Piltover on me. So where do I go? Where do I go? Live in some cave off the side of the river? It's not as if I haven't thought about that before. Oh, Lubov, I'm not. I didn't mean to scare you. You're very sweet. And I hope you know that whenever I talk about Piltover, I do not include you. There are exceptions, of course, to every law. But yes, I wondered if perhaps I might think I could understand. I am not sure if he ever could. Not until he goes down there and sees it for himself. Perhaps even if the Medardas went down there and saw for themselves, they may change their minds on things. Or they might decide that we are more scum than they thought and just decide to blow us all up. Nothing would shock me anymore. Sorry, there's been a lot on my mind recently. And this was meant to be helping you, not making you feel sorry for me. I apologize. Come on, you know me. Sad rambles seem to be my usual thing. And I keep going, don't I? That is what is important. I have not given up yet, despite everything, how they have treated me and how they view me. And I do not plan on giving up either. Not going to let them win. Though I don't exactly see it as a competition of sorts, but perhaps once or twice I have thought, wondered what it would be like if everybody knew that behind Hextech it was from the unification of ideas and minds of someone from Piltover. it was from the unification of ideas and minds of someone from Piltover and someone from the Undercity. I wonder what they would make of that. But you know how the council likes to spin things, perhaps they will try and keep my involvement completely out of it. Never mention me at all. I do not know what I would do if that happened. I do not think I would give up even then, no. I think it would just drive me harder to uh want to show the world what I can do. That someone from where I come from can do, but uh I do not know how kindly that would be taken to. But I do not think I would be able to stop. I like to think it makes me passionate. Wouldn't you agree? I'm sorry, that was terrible. Come on, gi- look at your book. Thank you. Forget I said anything. Honestly. Thank you, though. Well, I was getting myself in a little bit, not a not a state, but you know. You have distracted me from any negative thoughts. You're good at doing that. Making me laugh. And I think this is coming along okay. Good. I don't have to redraw it. Now, question is that we want to do another one? I like to do a few variations, but uh do I have a scrap of something? It isn't here. This will do. So. Hmm, perhaps over here instead. Clouds are getting dark outside, aren't they? How is this study incoming along? I see you have been making notes. Do you feel like you are uh understanding the material? Good, good. I'm proud of you, you know? Of course I am. I know that uh yes, okay, it is different level, I I'm never going to say that I am smarter than you. Well, okay, so perhaps maybe I would. But what I mean is that uh it does not matter. If you decided to drop all academia, I don't care. I'm not going to drop you. No offence, Lubov, but I am not with you for your brains. No, th- that is not me saying that you do not have any brains, my point is that whether you had a lot or a little makes no bearing on my feelings for you. I am not going to suddenly love you any less. I do not uh become interested in someone based on their ability to do long division, okay? I know that's not what you're doing, it was example. Okay? Keep at it. So, oh god, what happened there? Okay. Need to label this. At least uh okay, okay, okay. Plus not it's fine. I'll just close it down. It does not look very neat, but I'm trying to think. Oh, you're correct, I have not drank any water since you first gotten here. Ah. Thank you for the reminder. What? Yes, I can I can hear it in my voice that I should have been drinking. The old for me. Plus the Lubov, come on. You can't stay mad at me and you know it. Do I have a different colour? This one? Okay. Okay. Doesn't Be careful, I may not I may press it down too hard. I don't want to to mix with the paper. But what be a problem? Oh, is this? Come on, don't do that to me. The ink is drying up, great. Oh, it's fine, I have plenty more, just minor inconvenience, please go back to concentrating on your work. There we go. So. I have measuring tapes. So. Call it six inches. Cause when you did, you did it to go maybe every half inch. Maybe. Yes, look at me remembering to take water all on my own, specific, thank you. You know, I can't stay mad at you either. I'm not dropping anything. Darn, I I didn't eat earlier. Well no, th- there isn't a I didn't eat in this room. Uh, no, I normally eat. I I said earlier, I didn't I didn't specify that it was like very close to now. I grabbed something before I left the apartment. Yes, that was early. Well, I don't know how early, but what is it now? Almost eleven? It is not lunchtime, is it, and I I what I ate like a slice of toast at uh uh in in the morning at uh five AM, I perhaps it it it's food and I ate it, so I do not like when you look at me like this. Tell me what, so much gone. You get the rest of that chapter done and I will buy yours lunch, how about that? And it does not have to be from the academy cafeteria. Okay? Good. Not for you long left. I can make it. Steel, probably. We have to ask Jace's opinion on that. Yes, it is helpful having partner who uh was brought up and taught about the steelwork, metalwork. I can do a tiny bit, but you know, I'm not, I don't have the physical strength that Jace has to make any things really big and uh I do not breathe incredibly well around furnaces, but uh we make very good team, hmm? It is not that a lot of people interpret it as I am the brains and he is the brawn, but you forget that Jace also is very smart. I would not be partner with him if he was an idiot. And he may be naive about a lot of things, about how the world works and definitely about how the council works, I mean that boy. They're manipulating him and he doesn't even see it, he just thinks they're trying to be his friends, as if they don't have their own agendas. But he's very clever, you know? He means well, he just doesn't know any better. And I try, you know, but uh I feel I am not as pretty as I said in somebody on the council. Oh, well, thank you, Lubov. Yours is the only opinion that matters on that count anyway. Or is that what you think? You think I distract people away from getting their work done? Okay, if you say so. Uh, this choice. Okay, come on. Should we rotate it? I just keep looking out the window cause it looks a little like a cold rain and that would not be very good if we are going to walk the miles for lunch, but I guess we'll see. What food are you in the mood for? No, I am just trying to plan maybe before I have to walk. It is not inconvenient. Just think about it, cause we'll be leaving soon. Yes, your hour is almost up, can you believe it? I don't want them to get food, if it is a little early, then it is a little early, what do you want me to do? It can just be a snack if you would rather, or a very late breakfast. Food is food. I don't know if I really believe in three strict meals a day. But by believe in, I mean that I don't tend to do that, yes. What is what is bad about how about instead of three meals a day, I just have tiny little snacks more consistently throughout the day? Yes, I I know that that is not what I am actually currently doing, thank you. It is idea that I could do. Perhaps. It's a bit too exaggerated. Do we have to switch to pencil? Okay. Let me see, let me see. Okay, 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 okay. That works. Good, good, good. Right? This is, it works, doesn't it? Ito? Do we have to draw a page? No. Okay. Connects to what? Connects to this? And, okay, okay. I think that works. I better. You okay? Yes, I'm going like double checking something. Thought I had messed something up, but I have not. I think that um, oh, I lost my page in my notes. But there it is. So, everything going good? Good. I seen you, uh, you seem to have slowed down a little bit. Was it a little too much? W- was this environment okay? Could you, could you concentrate? I know I, I mumbled a little bit under my breath sometimes. It was okay? Good. I'm glad, I mean, if you ever want to do this again, I you know, I'm happy to be in a room alone with you at any time. Yes, I think I'm in a little bit of a mood today, to be honest. What can I say? It's not bad, is it? It is most a life I have felt in a very long time. Being with you, that is. You've made me so happy. You know that you have changed my life. Da? I'm not saying that it was going terribly before you came in, but where I am now? Of course, I think of my success as partly down to you. You cannot work well if you do not have good support system or good mental health, physical health. And I know I did not prioritize that stuff in the past, but since being with you, I, I can tell the benefits of, you know, eating and drinking and sleeping, especially sleeping. Oh my god. I did not know sleep could be this good. So, I you are incredible and the best thing that has ever happened to me. I know, before maybe I would have said getting into the academy. I suppose if I had not gotten into the academy, then I would not have met you. So, I suppose getting into the academy can go up there. But that is, what, what's they call it? The butterfly effect. You can frankly take all of it back to me choosing to build a little toy boat. Play with it in a specific lake that I did not frequent terribly. And I uh made it a little too good. It went a little too fast and went off down a tunnel, frankly, which, you know, anything could have happened to me in there. And instead well, behind this inspired led me here today. You could take a lot of things back. I'm just happy that I'm where I am now. I'm grateful for everything that has happened to lead me up to this point, even though some of those things were shit. So, shall we get food? Oh god. Jace, I did not expect you to be coming back. Oh, I, I see. Yes, I see that he brought Mel with him. Thank you, Lubov. Going over things, council business, I see, I see. Well, uh have fun? That was a have fun. Why would we be having fun? That was a stupid thing to say. No, no, you're not bothering. We were going to leave and get food anyway, so Vityashiminyalshuta. Get me out of here, please. You really are something, Lubov. I meant it, you know? Thank you for coming into my life. Thank you all so much for watching, my lovelies. A reminder that audio commissions are currently open. And I also have a Ko-fi and a Patreon. If everyone who followed me donated just one pound per month, that would help me out a lot. There are numerous different rewards on my Patreon, including access to my Discord. Your name read aloud in the credits and exclusive not safer work audios that you get to request. And a reminder that I do stream on Twitch about three times every week. I try and make all of my socials a safe space for everyone. And a thank you to my fledglings. Cryak, PhoenixJN, GingerArtist, AndyChrist, LittleLady, Victor'sDivorceLawyer, Enter, Whipson, Kim, Leviathan, Thorn, Sefogiblog, ToriYuki, ColleenDawn, HarmonyPhillips, RaslyD, TechSexual, TheOhNightmare, Liam, MikeJevorsky, CL, NestorO'Brien, VampireObsessed, JessicaBriggs, NerdHerder, Mouse, AllyWally, and PatriciaBee. And a thank you to my familiars. TiaroVoodoo Doll, NeuralName, Julia, AbbyClayton, Maximum, Isabel, YourFriendBlue, Sleepy, SelloMoon, Therese, Dandelion, Saladuria, LaurenLovett, April, CynicalAltura, Rancer, Abby, StarryCloud, Squeaks, and TamikaGalloway.